Yeah.
Call the meetings to order. Where the invitations start with?
That's great. Oh God, on this day which we observe the beginning of Lent, but the observance of Ash Wednesday, some of us are burying crosses on our foreheads. Others maybe will add it, have them added later. So Lord, we, we ask you that we might be mindful of what this cross means and of how it is an instrument of your peace. It doesn't make sense that it is, Lord, but that's the way you did it. For that, we are, we thank you for the blessing. Bless this meeting dear to God tonight, that your small still presence would guide it and that people would be here or would pay attention to what it is that you had to say to them. But also what it is that has to be shared through the community, that this committee, this commission might be a blessing to the community it serves. Thank you for the people who serve, Lord. Thank you for those who dedicate themselves to your service. In Jesus' name, amen.
The United States of America.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hatch to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign, motion passes. Moving on to public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you come to the podium and state your name and address, speak respectfully and limit your comments to three minutes. The commission will listen and consider your comments, but no immediate action will be taken at this time. For anyone from the public. All right.
It's Olivia from the.
Olivia.
Reading.
Okay, and we'll move on then to the discussion agenda. Let's see lights for tomorrow.
Well, I asked Stacy to put this on the agenda. Chris, Commissioner Hatch, were asked by a member of the DAR to consider this for the city. And the brochure you have, it's the information I got. I think Commissioner Hatch talked about maybe putting it on the Broadway Plaza screen. As recognition. But I really don't know, other than what's here. It commemorates a two hundred and fifty. It's starting the commemoration of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary birthday of the United States. And they're doing this as a recognition of Paul Revere's ride. So it'd be on April eighteenth. And they want people or communities to put two lanterns out to commemorate it. Right.
I, I think this could be done pretty simply. I mean, the person that Commissioner Wentz and I spoke with suggested that it could even be as simple as just an acknowledgement down at the Broadway Plaza. I think that like the first, I was just, we were just talking about this. I think that just this first of the brochure, if we put something like that on the Broadway Plaza as well as, you know, the lantern picture, I think that that would be sufficient. And I know that this community member is also going to be speaking with teachers and school personnel. So I think it'll be addressed in schools.
Nice just to remember the history of that and celebrate the United States birthday.
Well, I mean, as, as Marsha pointed out, it is a precursor to the celebration of well, seventeen seventy-six. I mean.
Right.
So it's the kind of the burst in that series.
No motion needed. We'll move on to the action agenda. Minutes of the February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
And make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
I move a motion by Commissioner Hutcheson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the minutes of February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Further discussion? All in favor? All of those same sign, and I will abstain. I was absent. Motion passes. Appropriations ordinance number four.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number four, second.
We have a motion to approve appropriations ordinance number four by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hatch. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign, motion passes. The KDOT sidewalk project.
And commissioners, recall, we were awarded a one plate, oh two two million dollar grant from KDOT through the transportation program back last October. And this would build new sidewalks in and around Concordia Middle School, providing connectivity over the sports complex and then the elementary school. It also provides for additional crosswalks or replacement crosswalks with the flashing strobe beacons and signage to help students more safely cross there and pedestrians cross. The KDOT's procedure was, was kind of different. They had us go ahead and send out requests for proposals and solicit proposals from interested consulting engineers that would then design the project. And then they sent us this grant agreement for you to sign to formally say, yes, KDOT, we want to move forward with the grant. So we have kind of two parallel processes, and this is the first step for you guys in that process. And then we need to formal commitment to the project from you through this grant agreement. This grant agreement is between the city and KDOT, saying that we accept the funds for this specified project. KDOT is paying a hundred percent of the cost of designing, construction of this project. The city responsibility or the local match responsibility stated in your memo would be for any expenses associated with right of way acquisition. So let's say that the right of way is not quite wide enough to put the sidewalk where we want it, and then we need to acquire an additional five feet, for example. And then we might need to purchase an additional five feet from a property owner. Or we might need to just give their permission for temporary constructions and access their property for a certain amount of time. Maybe our commitment is to put grass seed back in that area when we return the soil back to its condition and don't want a very expense beyond that. We don't know exactly what that expense is yet. We did budget that in our CIP funds for this year to the tune of about thirty thousand dollars. We expect it to be much less than that, but that was a conservative estimate offered by the consultant that helped us with the grant application for our budgeting services. Design is expected to be completed in twenty twenty-five. And so the next step in our process is to come back to you with that recommended consultant with their scope and fee schedule and have you approve that. Again, that's a hundred percent paid by this grant. And then construction of the sidewalks would actually occur in twenty twenty-six. KDOT offers the services of providing the bid letting and providing some of the construction administration oversight for that. And, and the consultant will provide a daily observation and oversight for that grant for us. So tonight, we'd request that you approve the grant agreement with KDOT. Authorize the mayor to sign the agreement so that we can move forward with the next step in the, in the process for this project.
I noticed that because of the grant, we have to have offer vacant.
Davis vacant.
Yes, vacant wages.
Yes.
Will that be a problem locally?
So typically what we have on any project that requires the expenditure of federal funds, whether it's our project or it's a sociological biologist project or a school district project, when contractors did the project, they know that they have to bid those data saving wages that they're prepared for. They don't understand if there's an opportunity for them to ask questions at the pre-bid meeting. We can provide them the information that you prepare and how to put it and be ready for that. And then on the backend during the project, that contractor then has to provide certified payrolls to prove that they did pay their, their workers those wages that they promised they would pay.
So the property, there, there's a potential to have to purchase property from people.
Like very, very minor, very minor, yeah.
What if? I mean, what if someone's not willing to sell that property then after we've selected the design? So are we gonna prior to design consult with the residents in those locations?
Yeah, so what basically, once the, once the design consultant is hired, we'll go through the preliminary design. We'll be in conversations with the property owners that are affected by the project. So they would be the ones that be located adjacent to the project. And at that point in time, we would know how much we would need and if we would need it temporarily or on a permanent basis. If we run into challenges, then we can go back and redesign and adjust the sidewalk location for that. Another option is, as Justin just mentioned, is that if we really need it, let's say that seven out of eight property owners along one stretch of road are in agreement and one is not, really, we've been having a process if we needed to for that stretch. I'm hopeful that once we share what the proposed design is with the property owners, if we do need some additional land for temporary construction access or a little bit more land to put the sidewalk there, that our property owners are going to recognize the benefit of this project and are going to want to be a part of it. And so that it won't be a battle to be able to obtain that background. That's what I'm hoping for.
And I mean, there, there should already be an easement in that area, right? I mean, like that, that already exists.
Yeah, so Seventh Street is a nice wide street. And so the right of way typically on most, like most first streets, the right of way boundary extends beyond the curb and gutter of this, of the street. And a lot of times will extend beyond where the sidewalk is. Sometimes we found that some of our, some of these are located on private property. We won't know that until we get into the actual surveying of this property. But along, along this area, there are some existing sidewalks and there are some non-existent sidewalks. But there should be sufficient room between the curve and where, where we want to put the sidewalk to make it work. We know, and especially after experiencing our snows this last January, that we want to make sure there's a nice grass strip between the curve of the road and where we put the sidewalks, if there's room for the snowplows to pile snow without covering the sidewalk. So we do want to allow for that gap if we can.
Sure.
And then KDOT has certain standards that we have to meet as to whether that sidewalk is five feet wide or six feet wide. And that's accounted for in the design.
When they surveyed, they, they locate the utilities prior to the design too, to make sure that, I guess, that the design is in the appropriate location with regards to the utilities to minimize maybe our expenses.
So that, that's always the goal. We've not done a formal, specific, detailed survey for this project. The consultant that helped us to prepare the application did make a site visit and did take a look at the area. So it has a general idea that there's any conflicts and how to minimize those. Once we select the consultant, they'll come out and they'll do that survey work and help us to finalize that design in more detail so that we can avoid those conflicts. We definitely don't want to get into a situation where we have to pay for relocation of utilities because that would be on us as well. So we do, we do want to minimize that.
I, I guess I'm sure that that was part of the pre-planning process. And then also, you know, taking into consideration the new fiber lines that were run in between those.
Yes, yes. We will have all that information finalized this morning.
I would move to approve the grant agreement with KDOT for the KDOT TA Concordia sidewalks for schools budget and authorize mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
And we have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hatch to approve the grant agreement with KDOT for the Concordia sidewalks for schools project. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign, motion passes. And next we have a resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-one eighty-nine condemnation of two eleven East Fifth and ten sixteen Washington.
And I did this to make sure that we retain the ability to keep these projects moving along and they've both been damaged by buyers recently. From my research, neither one of them weren't insured. I've talked to both owners. I've been in communication with both owners since then and you have their intent. But we want to do this. I'm hoping by the time the public hearing comes, we'll be, we're on our way to have both of these solved. The one on Washington Street, I believe, will be fixed up and re-inhabited. The one on this street will end up gone. Whether we do or the owner does it, we'll see.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one ninety-eight, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-one eighty-nine. Any further discussion?
Ninety-eight.
Oh, ninety-eight.
Yeah, sorry.
You're right. All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five, thirty-two, thirty-four, parking prohibited on grass.
Now, commissioners, we visited about this in January during study session when we discussed promoting community pride through property maintenance improvements. And one of the results of that was bringing you an ordinance that would prohibit parking on the grassy areas of yards and residential areas. And we discussed it initially, the first draft of it on, in February. And you asked for some changes to be made. We've made those changes back to you this evening for, for the discussion and consideration. Some of the recommended changes, including clarification for the need of a formal entry from the street or the alleys to improve parking spaces that would be allowed in a yard. We also removed the inspection requirement for moving to and from a residence. So the only inspection requirement would be if they were doing some construction or remodeling, we would send somebody out to say, okay, yep, you can park there, we get it. And, and then to help look at it when it's done to make sure the yard gets returned to its proper condition. We also added the definition of actively for related to moving to and from a residence. The discussion in February was concerned that it might take somebody a significant amount of time with a trailer parked in their front yard, claiming that they were moving to and from a residence. And so actively means that we should be able to see some noticeable progress to minimize that amount of time.
So this applies to alley parking also, man.
It does, the way, the way it's written. I think there has, has been some discussion. I know Amy had shared with us some ordinances from other area communities that would only apply to front and side yards. This was based on language from some different communities that had it applying to all of the yards. So that could be a point of discussion this evening if you want to continue to have it to apply to all yards or if you want to limit it to front and side yards.
The, one of the concerns with that and bringing that up is when you drive around and look at the amount of vehicles that are currently being parked on not improved surfaces. If people choose not to create a parking stall and all of those vehicles are in the road, then we're going to have a tremendous amount of on-street parking that we don't currently have. I don't know how that would affect the flow of traffic. I don't know how that will affect accidents or, you know, joggers, walkers in non-sidewalked areas potentially getting hit. But I just wanted, I guess, just the commission to consider that also because there are a significant amount of those. And then and then also in addition to that, making sure that whatever aggregates are. This is pretty vague currently with regards to aggregates, but making sure that those are products that are available locally. It seems like maybe some of the more preferred ones are a little bit harder to access. I'm having a hard time getting those. And so if we make this ordinance, we can't, I guess, we wouldn't want to limit it to only being concrete necessarily. And with that, we're not sure currently, or I'm not sure currently of the availability of those aggregates locally. Lastly, grandfathering and potentially if people already have an aggregate down that is sufficing and it maybe isn't whatever the one that we come up with is, will we allow those people to maintain that aggregate because it's already existing? Or do they have to dig it all out and redo their drive? Because some people currently have asphalt millings as their, especially in alleyways, I believe, more frequently. And I don't know what kind of issues those may or may not be causing. I just wanted those things to be considered. And I have had citizens approach me to express their frustration with being told what to do on their properties. And maybe wanting to limit this a little bit more. Or, I mean, for like, you know, citizens that are not letting their weeds grow up behind, but maybe have extra vehicles, don't want to keep all their vehicles out on the road, don't necessarily have all of those things, or maybe currently have asphalt millings, et cetera.
I would like to speak to the, the aggregate piece before we start our discussion, just to kind of help that a little bit. So first in section one A, the, the language says that the parking improved park surface would be a hard surface of granulated material, asphalt, concrete, brick, paper, decorative stone. So we would allow some kind of granulated material. We would allow asphalt. We did explicitly not include asphalt millings. We've had some experience with those now. We know that those wash fairly easily. Earlier this week, Shane and Brigo and I met with Jason Johnson and he's working on some standard details for, for what this could look like in, in a basic residential lot in the community. He is preparing sketches of a plan view so you can see how it would define a formidable entry, where it would go in the front and side yard, where the improved surfaces could go in the rear yard. We're trying to take into consideration any requirements for green space, that sort of thing. He's also doing a cross-section that would show what it would look like with asphalt or concrete and then what it would look like for granular material. He's going to help us define what the granular material should be so that it can get proper compaction. Our, our concern with the granular, granular material is that in a heavy rain, we don't want it washing into our storm sewer system because that causes more maintenance and can cause flooding in residential areas. We don't want that to happen. But we recognize the need to be able to have that affirmative. Whenever one, it could allow homeowners to put an improved surface in on their own or without a contractor. And number two, it could be potentially more cost effective than concrete, depending on how it's done. I, we, we agree that that granular material should be sourced locally. So once we have determined what that should be, I've asked Jason to go ahead and call also the neighborhood to make sure that they carry it. If they don't carry it, and if he chooses to approve and move forward with this ordinance, we're going to have a conversation with them to see if they can start carrying it. And that way it is sourced and available locally for, for our residents to use.
The green space component is, I, I believe, pretty important too because the location of a driveway that somebody might put in being directly in front of the front door of a house and obviously not ideal for that. Or concreting an entire front yard to park on would be less than ideal. So whatever those green space requirements are, and hopefully there are some, would be beneficial.
Were, were you able to research and speak to that?
What are you asking specifically about the green space?
The minimum or maximum requirements.
Yeah, I looked at that. A yard is described, is defined in our zoning regs as an open space unstructured by buildings open from the ground to the sky, except as otherwise allowed in these regulations, which would, in my opinion, mean that, you know, you can build sheds and garages in your side and rear yard as allowed for residential accessory buildings. But the overruling one on that would be the lot coverage for residential zoning is fifty percent with all roofs, maximum coverage. But I found nothing except for in the subdivision regulations, article five said that if you're considering a subdivision or splitting land for lots, for building lots, you consider dedicating open space for recreation or just green area. But it doesn't specifically say it has to be done. And the open yard doesn't say it has to be green space. Your open yard is open to the sky. So that might be something we want to look at when we're looking at our zoning reg. Because I, I thought it was in there and I looked and looked. It's one of those phantom rules that you think you know and you don't. But I thought there was something about the amount of green space. I know in industrial, you can only cover forty percent of your lot with buildings. But then there's a rule that says you can cover a hundred percent if you can get the off-street parking in your building. So there's little things like that that get you all the time. But I don't see anywhere in the residential zoning where it says your open yard has to be green space. It just has to be unstructured by buildings from the ground to the sky.
So I could have, I could have rock my entire yard and that still would be permissible. And I could, it's, it's a rock garden.
Or it's not.
Or a structure. Desert landscape.
I guess when you take into consideration circle drives though as well, those are actually meant to be, and, and they're typically offset from a house an appropriate distance. But there are circumstances where circle drives are appropriate on larger lots.
Oh, even on, there, there are some that are on some pretty tight lots. If you got a small car, you can look at that sometime. But we've, I've actually permitted two or three circle drives since I've been here. Where it's more convenient to just, instead of jumping the curve in your head up to the street or driving up to the front door, front porch, say just put a circle drive in, cut the curb. Concrete it.
Eight dollars a square foot, is that?
Hundred and eighty something now, I think.
A yard.
Or yard, I mean, sorry. Yard, a yard? Eight, I thought it was eight dollars a square foot to put, I mean, if you're having someone install it.
Well, it depends on the thickness. You yeah, a lot of contractors will figure it by the square foot, but they gotta know how thick you want it and what kind of base under there and then they just charge you. There's actually a scale out there, just had one the other day. Depending on the thickness, eighty-three yards per, or eighty-three dollars per square foot is what the average would be. But a lot of people, I remember back in the day when I came here, anchorage, contractors and anchors were charging four dollars a square foot for a four inch thick slab, no matter what it was, driveway, patio or whatever. And down here, they were charging three fifty or something like that. But now, I don't know what it is. But I don't even know if they figured it that way.
The, the one eighty is just the material, no labor. Okay.
The struggle I think that we're always, or we're going to continue to run into with ordinances like this is how how do you allow people that are generally being good stewards of their property not be encumbered with an ordinance like this, but to have something that allows there to be some ability to address or enforce those maybe who are not being good stewards of their property? And then the question of what determines what's good stewardship of the property or not? So the individual who has, you know, maybe, I, I know when we first bought our house, the, the previous owners had several kids. And then there's, you could park three cars in our driveway, but they had, I think, six vehicles amongst their whole family. And so there were people that were parking in the back, which makes sense off the alley. And, but they, they weren't just pulling up to their front door, parking in the middle of the yard either. So how do we, how do we find the discretion? Or how do we build the discretion into an ordinance that allows us to achieve what we're trying to achieve without making it cumbersome for people who are trying to do the right thing, in genuine manner?
When, when somebody wants to pour like a driveway or a pad of any sort, do, are they required to get a permit from the city?
Well, it depends, you know. If they contact me and if they're cutting the curb, putting a driveway in, they should be getting a permit of one kind or another so that we can oversee what they're doing and if that's legal. If I get questioned on how much parking you're going to do, but you know, our rules say if you provide parking for more than three vehicles in a residential zone, it should be in the side or rear yard. That's one rule. And so I've got driveways out there. I mean, you know, in my old neighborhood, there's driveway. It's a massive amount of concrete, but it still doesn't cover fifty percent of the yard. And you could probably park four or five vehicles in front of the house and then or more, beside and, and back and then to in the garage. That much concrete, but typically I try to lead people the right way on that, you know, don't. Some areas don't have sidewalks or some areas, the space between the sidewalk and the curb is so short that when they're pulling off the street, parking there across the sidewalk. That's the case on Eleventh Street, the school. That's just, so the kids have to, if there's somebody parked there, they have to walk around it basically. And I don't know, there's, you just keep working on, just keep working and working with them. Try to get, get them heading in the right direction, try to come up with solutions. I mean, that's all you can do. And then some people, it's just, it's going to be a burden.
Especially if they have a lot of cars that park in the back of the alley.
Yeah.
That concerns me that we're making them do some kind of covering, you know, to park it ground and cover.
Yeah. If you park on the grass consistently, unless it's a special kind of grass, you know, over time with wet and Over time, with wet and mud and stuff, it can become a mess. You know, where I live, there's what street that. That I live on. It's a two, two block long, goes from eleven to thirteen. My side is all buffalo grass, and everybody that lives on the other side of the street parks. My side on the grass, and I mow around constantly. And it doesn't do anything to that grass. That is buffalo native grass that's been expanding in my yard for twenty-five years. I can't stop, but I don't care. It's tough as heck, and you know, not do anything with it. And. I don't know what those people are going to do. They're going to drive with their steed, and they get stuck there in the winter and things, and it rains, it washes all down in there, but. Yeah, there's going to be, there's going to be some trepidation here and there, because I would, I would think that some of them are just flat. Parking right up to their door because they're like. Other reasons, maybe because they're a little bit disabled, cane walker, they don't, you know, and they don't want to go so far, and that's understandable too. But it doesn't look too attractive sometimes to see that, you know, on a grassy yard, and all the neighbors got their yard nice, and then. You got that, so it's. What kind of aesthetics are we trying to achieve?
Yeah, there's those that park in concrete and. Never move their vehicles.
Well, inoperable, inoperable vehicles can be another, you know, I've been down alleys and seen two garages of vehicles squeezed in between two garages. And backed in there, so you can't see the tag. If I drove by back when I was getting licensed, if it was expired, I'd.
Honestly, I kind of feel like this is a good start. I don't know that there's a perfect, I mean, I'm thinking about in my neighborhood, I mean, my neighbors to the north. They park in the, or in the alley in their backyard. There's no other place. So. And it would be a hardship for them if they had to. Do anything else, probably.
This has been an issue for years. I remember a year ago, somebody asked me, I have a good problem to have downtown, parking problem. But. When I was a kid, my dad lent a neighbor kid a car so he could drive all the neighborhood kids to school. And now every, there was one car for three households. Now there's at least three cars for every household.
How many people was there?
No matter, yeah, no matter the population detalining the vehicle, I'm going to leave this vehicle everywhere.
So in 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 the situation you're just referencing, that that it would be problematic to put some sort of. Space in the backyard or.
No, it would be a problem for them financially to do it, probably. I I think they would not comply, I I'm guessing.
With those things in mind, do you think a nice start would just to be the, do the front yards and side yards and not address the backyards at this point? Due to the comments that both Commissioner Jack City and Commissioner Hash talked about?
I I was thinking the same thing. Actually, the the question that I would have maybe would be. On a situation where a house is on a corner, and and the backyard is very visible from the street, right? I mean, how how far do you get them? Technically, you can look up my alley from Archer and see the backyard. But but where a house is on a corner, would that be? Would you park in the backyard? What would that be considered, the side yard, or do we just start with front and side yard, see where we go with it, and see what problems we have?
So Salina has, they prohibit front yard parking. Um, front yard includes all area between the structure and the curb. A corner lot has two front yards.
Okay.
There you go.
We have, our zoning says that a corner lot has a primary front yard, that's the address side, and a secondary front yard.
Okay, so that would, if we said front and side.
It would be a little bit tougher with a corner lot. It'd have to be behind the house, basically, or on the other side yard that's not on the corner.
I think that could be a pretty good place to start and see.
Right, too. The other, Boy also just has front yard parking prohibited as well as McPherson. Those are.
So you can put it in the side in Boy. They would allow from the side yard, the side yard, in Boy.
Yeah, it was it was front yard only, that's prohibited here, and then specifically.
And just just for clarity, what what we're saying is. Parking's prohibited unless it's on an improved surface. So if we say front and side yard only, what we're saying is you can't park in your front and side yard. Unless you have an approved surface, so you can still do it, you just have to improve the surface. And then what we're saying, if we remove rear yards, is that people can still park in their rear yards, but they don't have to have an approved surface. So is is that, is that what we want to say? I just want to make sure we're.
Not what I want to say, but I think it's what's most practical.
I think it's it's reasonable.
I mean, in the future, we, I mean, we still can eventually add the backyard to this ordinance. I mean, seeing how it goes, I I just think this is a.
Well, I think it's a good transition. It 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 gives people a opportunity, okay, I can't burn through anymore, but I got, I'm burning back. And over time, if that becomes muddy or whatever, they're going to have to do it.
And there's already ordinances for like scrapping and junk stuff. In place, and there's already a maximum front inside yard vehicles allowed is three. Those are already in the ordinances, correct? Like in the front, if you're going to park in front of your house, isn't it three car maximum? Isn't that what you were saying earlier?
If you create a space for more than three vehicles, it has to be in the side or rear yard.
Okay, it just can't be in the front, and it's for more than.
Technically, we allow parking in the front yard, as long as it's on your property. But it can't be for more than three spaces by our zoning regs.
And then how, and then space is defined, we talked about this.
Ten by twenty, but I don't know, because. That might be something, because we do have the ability to, on a big parking lot, when you're required so much parking for a business. Like a Walmart or restaurant or anything, if it's not downtown, and you're required so much off-street parking based on the occupant load and things on your business, that. But you're allowed to have a certain percentage of that be for compact cars, it would operate smaller space. So if you're limited on land, you could say, okay, I need ten spaces, but two of them can be compact cars, so.
I mean, this is only up regards to residential, right?
It's on bike cars and residential, anyway. So I, you, you know, it's kind of judgment call, I think, sometimes. You know, is it a patio or parking stall? What else patio until I decide I got to get my vehicle up there, and I got furniture out there and stuff. I mean, we do have some of those too, you know, where they make that argument, hey, I'm going to drive, it's a patio, well, next time, go buy another parking.
So, and I think that as we, as we continue to work towards some of this this ordinance and and working on some of the property improvement, I think that those are, those are. We're going to find opportunities for improvement, uh, to clarify different things, and and so I I do think this is a good start. It's a nice transition. It gets us kind of moving in the right direction. We don't have to get there right now, but it allows us to start moving there, so.
And you brought up grandfathering. We did just briefly about that this morning at department head meeting. So when we adopt a new series of building codes, we don't go back and make everybody come into compliance right away. We wait for a trigger. So if they come into Bruno and and pull a building permit for a remodel, for example, after we adopt a new set of codes, now they have to bring things into compliance with the new codes. It's effective by that scope, and and Bruno can speak to more than that. So what we would propose for grandfathering is if somebody already has an existing improved surface, we can go check it out. We can say, yes, it meets our new standards. If it doesn't meet our old standards, we we could say we don't have to bring it up right away. But if it becomes a problem, because in this ordinance, it does say the regular maintenance of the improved parking area shall be provided by the property owner or tenant. So let's say that it's in a parking area, and we have a big rain, and what we're finding is that that big rain is washing out their millings or their gravel, for example. Into the street, but at that point in time, we could come in and say, it's not being regularly maintained, we need to bring it up to standard. We need to bring it up to standard to the new ordinance that was enacted, so now you have to do this. But would that be a reasonable way for implementation, you believe?
Because I think, I think where there, where there currently exists some sort of surface. To me, that's that's demonstrating that this is someone who's trying, and 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 I I appreciate that effort. I mean, I I really think that what we're trying to address is, is for whatever reason, the individuals that just. Pull into the driveway because it's it's easier, convenient, where where there there's a better opportunity, and and to help improve the enjoyment of their neighbors. And in their own space. So somebody who has a gravel or a rock driveway or busted brick, I appreciate you trying. And that's, that's, that's a good effort. Until it becomes a problem, and then we can address it.
Honestly, I think it's important to reiterate the effective date of this. So if you choose to proceed to adopt it, as we've amended it today to remove the rear yards from this ordinance. Um, even though you adopted today, it wouldn't go into effect for enforcement until September first. And and the reason that we discussed wanting to do that was to allow our residents ample time while the weather is good to go ahead and prepare their improved surface. While we're starting, of course. So is that, is September first still a reasonable effective date? That gives about about six months.
Sure. Because it would affect more people in the backyard.
That the aggregate component and not being, making certain that there's something locally available, still feel like is. Uh, pretty important, but if, I mean, if everyone's fairly confident that that is. A good possibility, then I don't have any, I mean, I guess I'm in favor of moving forward tonight. If we need to dig deeper into that and make certain that that's possible. And perhaps we should table it for the next meeting.
That's up to you guys. I know that Jason wasn't going to have the details ready for us to share tonight, but he had, so that he could have them ready for the next meeting. So if you want to table action to the next meeting and make sure you have all that, we can make sure we have confirmation on the aggregate availability of that meeting. We can have that ready for them as well.
And maybe also make the modification, sure.
Yeah, I would, I would think that we'd be able to know what sort of materials available. Out there, and I would probably think there'd be something that we would be able to access here that would suffice, or be sufficient. Or maybe we work to include what is available, right? If it's going to be highly problematic. For for them to provide that material or bring the material in, and what material do they have? That may not be ideal, but would be sufficient for a little really, or if this gets us closer. Being readily available would be beneficial.
I move to table ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two thirty-four.
We have a motion to table ordinance twenty twenty-five thirty-two thirty-four by Commissioner Hash, second by Commissioner Owens. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, same sign, motion passes.
And moving on to reports, manager's report.
I don't have much to share, just thank you all for allowing me to get away for a few days. My husband and I enjoyed the trip. Um, and just beginning to work to catch up on work, and so if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer.
Staff reports.
I wanted to remind everyone that summer rec programs are open for registration on our site, everything, but the playground hasn't opened yet, but it'll be open soon. Urge people to sign up in a timely manner, not wait till the last minute, hopefully not to miss it for one, but give us a chance to do some pre-planning on overall numbers, so. But it is open until the end of the month.
I was going to just give a quick update on the housing grant. As you know, we're finished with it, but it had, it was considered closed as of December twelfth. And so then that's the date that we have to remain low income for fifteen years, so. Twenty thirty-nine, is that right? The only thing we have left to do is something called a cost certification. It's. Kind of like an audit, but not a full-blown audit, and that is required, and our auditors are going to do that when they come in April. And then there will be an onsite visit by rural development on May first. That was supposed to have been done three years ago, and then that will be the end. Got a lot done.
Commissioner comments?
We we put on our website, and it's been in the local paper, our FUD, the proposed. Low Mar Letter map provision for our floodplain that we've been working on, we, I I, right now, we're in a, the ninety-day viewing period. Anybody that wants to come in and view the maps and 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 make any comments on them. It's open right now, and I've got them full-size scale maps of what's being proposed in our low mar. For that, so I thought I'd get that out there, if you're looking at, you know, a lot of people. So I want to get it out there in the public, because I'm hoping people will come in and look at that, because I'll be awful happy if this goes through. Hopefully, but the the point of the viewing period is so I can look at my personal property and say, I don't agree with that, or I think it should be just where that was the other way. But we'll see.
And then ninety-day viewing period, how would somebody view that? Is it just, you just keep it in your.
You can either go, there there are maps online, or.
But the larger version.
I've got scale models this big, and I still have to put them on board, but I'll have them here. And we can either put them out front, or they can send them back to my office, come here, whatever, for reviewing the physical map, but you can also view them online.
I don't know if that's ideal to have it sitting in the front lobby, but it seems like that would be the most convenient for public.
Well, we can keep them behind the counter, something for somebody from in and out of them. If you're talking floodplain, people always want to talk to me in, so.
Okay.
We can probably come back and say, or I gotta go up front and grab them, and. You know, find their property or whatever. And there's going to be a few, and I'm getting a little more familiar with it now. We've got some free. There's some, you know, not free, but they're part of the bid for loan, uh, letter, uh. We can do a map amendment on a specific property if it's questionable, like right on the edge when the line moves. We've got some.
We we included ten of those in our consultant bid, so we have the funds available to pay for that if somebody's property is right on the edge and right close, and they think it should be out. We can pay for them to get that done. Honestly, Bruno's, with Bruno's knowledge and understanding of how this process is working. I would highly encourage anybody with any questions to come make an appointment with him to go over it.
So Bruno, point in the ninety days.
I don't know, I gotta go look at the dates, because we actually got it in the paper after the start. Just based on the latest three months and people on vacation and things, but it went in the paper like. It started like March one, and I think it wasn't in the paper till, we get it.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, I think.
I'm confused about what I've sent, but I think it's.
It's on our website now.
I think it was already in the paper last week.
It was in the paper last week, but that was early. It was supposed to go in today, but they managed to get it in early, and also that demo stuff they got. The bidding documents they got.
Floodplain was last week, the demo stuff's tomorrow. That's what it is.
Anyway.
I'm sitting right here.
What what day, what day is it, was it, is on the ad, you know?
You know, let me check that out, get back there, bro.
It's not tomorrow or the next day, I know that.
No, I, I would, the the low mar project has been in the works for a long time, and I really am encouraged. You know, government, will the government turn awfully slowly? So it's encouraging to see like we're we're almost there. But I remember when those those floodplains first came out and how difficult it was to to hear that information after the investment that we'd made, so this is. Almost there.
It was worth pursuing.
You gotta do this. Don't count your chickens, right?
I had a a couple comments, questions, one. At the library board meeting last evening, they, several of the members expressed their gratitude for the streets crews for. Um, ensuring that their. Areas were cleaned, and not just, I guess around the library, I think, potentially, or initially, maybe some of the the parking spots. Hadn't initially been clean, and they got ahold of. Actually Russell, and he he contacted the. Mr. Kisby and made sure that that was, he made sure that was done, and then they also commented just about. He made sure that was done. And then they also commented just about their, and their neighborhoods as well, I think. So they just wanted to express their gratitude. I told him I'd pass that along. Um, I think this is the, we're starting into the severe weather season and I was curious. Um, look, do we publicize, um, like shelters or places for people to go in, in the. Occurrence of severe weather? Where, where would they, um, access the information like that? Especially if people were like traveling to town, et cetera.
So we'll put some stuff on our Facebook, because this is actually severe weather week, but a lot of the stuff has got canceled because of our crazy Kansas weather this week. We were actually supposed to do a tornado sign and test today and we canceled it just because. Uh, actually, we didn't, National Weather Service did, but, um, so we'll put some stuff on our Facebook, but the only shelter. Designated shelter in town is the elementary school. It's the only one that's, um, rated for tornadoes.
And it has limited access.
Limited access, yes.
Especially during school.
Yes.
I thought the courthouse basement, that might.
So that has not been, it used to be, but it's not, they've, um, unrated it, I guess, if that's the word you wanna say, but, um. As a safety shelter, right?
Is that concerning? Oh. I mean, especially, I mean, we're, we're doing the St. Joseph subdivision additions and, and those homes, they're not going to have, and not like you can't. Find somebody that has a basement, I guess, or go somewhere that's not rated, but is that a concern? That the only rated public place that we have to go in the entire town is the. Little FEMA shelter that's already loaded with kids during school hours? If there was a tornado, I'm just asking, we can, we can bring this up later. It's severe weather week or national weather week or whatever.
Yeah, um.
It, it, it seemed like the whole FEMA rating of structures came about after that Joplin tornado and there was another one that really pushed that rating. And there's such specific requirements, there was a ton of grants available for public facilities at that point in time to get. I don't know if those grants are still available anymore, but the terminology for like a good basement or like the courthouse square now is, is like a. A hardened structure. So, so you, you can count on it, we've counted on it for decades, ever since the buildings were built in the twenties, thirties, forties, fifties, you know, whatever. But they just don't, don't meet current standard. But it's not that there's not safe places to go, it's just that they're not FEMA rated and you can't get that designation unless you meet some very specific requirements. And I've probably got those memorized as well, right?
Well, let's trust them that he does.
Like shelter to a FEMA number and it's supposed to tell you the shelter locations, but. If they're not FEMA rated and somebody's in our area, the only location that it's gonna give them is the elementary school.
Right.
And that's open then during that time, like.
Yeah, so we have, we actually have keys to that building.
Okay.
And it, we do, um, go into a twenty-eight oh warning here. One of the miles runs out there and opens up if it's not during school hours.
But I think that's the challenge with communities across the state is you can build these, um, generally public buildings, but then you have to make sure that somebody's there to open them to the public. In order to advertise them as open public spaces for passersby coming through, so.
It's, it's a challenge.
Yeah. The, the good news is we have a lot of general public buildings here in town, and so if there are passersby that come through, they could stop at any of our open businesses. And the business managers could give them this, a, a say, hey, you can join us here. I know, oh gosh, it was price up for years and I was driving home from Salina. One evening and a storm came up and the tornado was behind us and there were a lot of us to shelter at the shortstop and, um, for the convenience store in Minneapolis for a while. In, in the freezer with several of our closest friends for a couple of hours, but now that was their, their safe place to go for traveling public. So I think it's important, um. As, as we're traveling, as our friends and family are traveling during severe weather, pay attention to the weather, look ahead, look at the forecast, take a look at what's happening and where you're going to. Um, know your stops and, and when you do stop, do you go up or whatever? Look ahead and see where they're going, but, um. Our, we, we know our building is open certain hours. I know fire department usually has something open or doorbell to ring. I mean, people can come ring the doorbell and say, hey, where do I go? Um, police department is, has, has your lobby open so people can stop in there and say, where do we go? I know our shortstops are open, our commuters are open twenty-four sevens, people can stop there as well to find out where to go and. That'd probably be one of our best bets here.
Um, my last question is about potholes and, um, that, where, how that's. How that will be progressing, has that started with the filling of those or?
Yeah, it's, it's started and then it gets delayed, um, come across other things like winds and. But yeah, that, we are definitely gonna get to them soon.
And, uh, I mean, there, yeah, it's just tis this season, I guess. Republican has some significant ones, but I know that there's also Sixth Street. East and west of downtown has some fairly, but they're, yeah, they're just popping up for the season for that.
Yeah, they are. Pothole season usually predates orange cone season, so.
That's true. And, you know, again, people in some of the areas that. Ours are pretty minimal compared to a lot of other communities. And so a lot of people comment that we, we don't have it that bad soon. The term, remember that too, when, when we, when we experienced those after the winter time, lost a lot of them.
Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
The, the flood plane was published February twenty.
February twenty-seven. Ashley, any comments?
Um, no, I'm in Topeka and I think I lost the back half of my car in a pothole, so I echo, ours are not as bad. Agree, we need to work on them.
Okay, and then motion to adjourn. Then a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Owens to adjourn. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
All opposed, same sign.